Check sound. You guys sound okay now? All right. Well, good evening, everybody. Let me call to order this regular business meeting of the Steedmont City Council here on Tuesday, March 3rd. And welcome, everyone, tonight for our meeting. We've got one council member that's traveling with the Lone Star Conference Champions tonight, so that's good. Wish him safe travels. Also want to, you know, we do the pledge before we start our meeting every night for the council. Casey Hogan usually helps me carry the, uh, the lack of a comma in the pledge. I just want to remind everybody to go and look at the, uh, the, uh, proposal allegiance, because it's "One Nation Under Guide," no pause, no comma. So, we can remind ourselves of that this evening. I also want to, uh, issue a big thank you to, uh, the Steedmont Police Department and the Eret County Sheriff's Office for the work that they did with the trial that we, we had in the community recently. It was, uh, first class is, is two miles a word to, to talk about the great work that they did. And, uh, Chief King, I know you're, you're proud of what your team did. The community is, is proud of what your team did. But in particular tonight, I wanted to, to mention Lieutenant Grisham and Lieutenant Miller, who really went above and beyond, uh, leading the charge, so to speak, to make sure that every detail was, uh, was anticipated. And, uh, thank goodness, everything went without, uh, without flaw, but it was, I think, due in a large part to the attention to detail and professionalism that we also be proud of in our, our community for our force. So, so thank you very much for that. Also want to mention, and there'll be a proclamation, uh, issued later this month, that this is, uh, next week, March 15th, is Poison Prevention Week. And this is just a reminder, uh, for our community to, to safeguard and ensure that you've got contact information so that, that we can ensure that, uh, both household chemicals and, uh, chemicals at work are in, uh, in safekeeping for the benefit and health and welfare. And, and just wanted to, to mention that the North Texas Poison Center is, uh, really making a push, uh, this year to make sure that there's connection with, uh, local hospitals and emergency, uh, personnel. But most importantly, those that, uh, you know, maybe have household chemicals at home to, uh, take care of. So, I'll just mention that. Okay, then, uh, we'll move on to Citizens' General Discussion and see if anybody has anything they'd like to come forward to the council and, and discuss this evening. Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on then to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, portion of the, and, uh, I'll ask Judy Miller to come forward. And at this time, I'll open a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance, uh, 2015-03, which is an amendment to the Neighborhood Business District, uh, language. So Judy, if you could just give us a briefing on that, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Pleasure to be here in the city. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission met on, uh, February the 25th at 5:30 to conduct a public hearing and, uh, had the public hearing and make a recommendation to you tonight on this particular amendment to the zoning ordinance. They did recommend approval of this, uh, particular amendment to you. It has to do with the, um, B1 District, Section 6.1D, Princesse II, which has to do with the height, area, yard, and lot coverage, specifically the maximum. There is something in this, this zoning ordinance that is an anomaly, as far as I'm concerned. And the many that I have looked at over the years, um, it's a little bit of an anomaly because, uh, it is the only, uh, section in that area of maximum. It says maximum lot area. And typically, if you have something that is, is different like that in any zoning district, you put it right up front in the description of the zoning district. Because people need to know that there are certain things that are peculiar or particular to that particular zoning district that's out of the norm or ordinary. And this particular thing is because it's the only one that doesn't, is not like the other commercial districts. And it has a maximum lot area of one acre. And I, I did not catch this. It was caught for me because other people has, have had this enforced against them over the years. And I got a phone call before that McConville case come, came to you. And that's why it had to be, uh, pulled from your agenda. They have since, uh, found another site, uh, so you will not be hearing that case, at least on that particular land use, uh, at, at, on the McConville thing. But anyway, it, it showed me that that was a, that was an anomaly. It should be changed, and that's what I'm bringing forward to you tonight, to eliminate that maximum area. And you can see, well, uh, I don't know where the zoning map went. Uh, it's, it's usually sitting back here in the corner, but, uh, the orange represents the B1 District. And if, if that's, uh, you can see from, that's, that's okay. It, it, right there. If you want to see the orange area, there's a, there's a ton of acreage of orange in, in your zoning map now, which would not, uh, it would not indicate that you do have a one-acre maximum on anything. So, I'm just asking for a little consistency in the zoning ordinance. And I'm going through this, as you know, section by section, as we find these things and trying to amend them and make them consistent and more user-friendly for the builders and developers in the city. So, tonight, I would ask you to amend the zoning ordinance to eliminate the maximum and have no minimum lot area.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Judy from the council?
Yes, sir.
All right, Alan?
Judy, in your research on this, did you find anything that would indicate there was a specific purpose for including that in there?
I wish I could have. Wish I could have. It would have settled my mind.
Right, right.
No. It was, is truly, I don't know.
Okay.
Unexplainable, unsolved mystery.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of the, uh, proposal? Anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the, uh, ordinance number 2015-03 as presented by Director of Planning and Building Services.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to adopt ordinance 2015-03 amending Section 6.1 Neighborhood Business District B1 as presented. Any discussion? Or proceed to vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? All right, that motion carries, uh, as presented, uh, putting ordinance 2015-03. All right, now let's go to, uh, 3B, the Preliminary Platte. Judy, if you'd, uh, give us, uh, details on that, please.
This is a preliminary platte of Gulf, Gulf Country Estates 2. There we go. Uh, this is the area map showing where the subdivision is in relationship to the city. Uh, you know the area well. It's made up of about three lots, uh, three lots, actually. Uh, no hope on development will be disturbed. But here's just how it lays in relationship to development, and it shows the size of the lot. All meet the minimum standard. Most are larger than the 700 square feet required of the R1. Uh, this is a copy of the preliminary platte. The, uh, engineer, Ken Dees, P.E., uh, Chalk Mountain Engineering from, uh, Dallas, Fort Worth area is here this evening, representing the owner, um, Mr. Gay. And the Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, February the 25th, and recommended approval of the preliminary platte with the condition that the developer-owner comply with a parkland dedication ordinance, uh, which requires the dedication of parkland or a fee in, in lieu of dedication of parkland. And, uh, I'll let Mr. Keen, uh, Ken Dees speak to that, but I think they're going to, um, do the dedication. Uh, the fee, uh, would amount to about $28,600 per lot. And, um, this lot, I mean, this area is composed of 48 lots. So, it's 14.551 acres of land divided into three blocks and 48 lots. Uh, it's all R1, single-family, which blends with the area, uh, next to it. Um, I've hopefully given you a larger copy of the preliminary platte so they can read it. A couple of the lots, um, do not meet, uh, the front yard setback. And I'm used to having the, the subdivision regs say that at the building setback line, you will meet the front yard. Yours, yours say at the street line. That's, that's something that's, again, a little different. But they will correct those, uh, to have those meet the standards before the final platte is submitted. Everything else about the platte, uh, it's in the Hundred Year Flood Plane, going through a flood study. And I can let Mr. Dees, uh, speak to that in more detail if you need to. But, um, all the streets, um, they're, they're practically ready to file the construction drawings, or they have filed construction drawings for the final platte submission. So, they're really moving this forward very quickly, which is great. And this is a great new addition to our city. Uh, the streets are dedicated to a 50-foot, uh, wide standard subdivision regulations and water and sewer that we constructed in accordance with our design criteria. And all other aspects of the preliminary platte requirements in the subdivision have been met. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions, or, and certainly, Mr. Dees can, uh, answer any questions.
Any questions for Judy?
I'd sure hate to have lot 15 and 16, because everybody tries to drive that green from the T-box and cut the corner. No, I don't.
Okay.
Especially on the fourth. Those four-man scrambles.
Speaking of golf, Alan?
Um, never mind. Judy, do you know, and this might be history, but do you know if, was this, uh, little subdivision a planned part of that Gulf Country Estates when it was built years ago?
I don't know.
Okay. My, my memory says it was.
It appears to be that it was. In fact, it was always dedicated, uh, there was a boundary that was dedicated for residential development. We're within that envelope.
Okay.
And, and we didn't, uh, fudge over that line. We didn't take up the entire area that was allocated, but it's within the area that was originally allocated for residential development.
And that, and that was why I wondered if that was a, a part of the original plan, but, but it just was never finished out.
It was actually beaded, uh, as such, um, and it was contingent upon, uh, approval from the bank, which was Sunbelt.
Sunbelt savings and loan.
And, which doesn't exist anymore, so that fixed the, uh, the horrendous, uh, that had been, it's not lost, and, uh, relinquished rights. So, those kind of issues would be, uh, but it's really, uh, just over. It, it didn't matter because we were within the bounds of, uh, developing the way we were trying to develop more residential, within golf course, we stayed within the bounds of what was to be residential.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, where's the driving range going?
Uh, actually, I, uh, I believe that it's going to shift to the left just a little bit. As you can see, there's a little bit of, uh, a little step up here, so I can show you. Both of these stubbed-out streets serve as drainage pathways. I'm sure many of you know what I'm referring to, but there's quite a bit of drainage that comes to improve this development. And so, we've, we're picking up the water here and then putting it into a channel, which, and this looks like a huge channel, but it's really not. It's only about a foot deep here, and it daylights at this point, too. So, you have general swell out here on the golf course. You really won't even see it once it's all graded. Uh, but there's a, there's a golf tee that sits right here, and you can see we have a little bit of a, uh, a PI here, so to speak, in that channel, and that's why we're avoiding that golf tee that, uh, that is here, the practice range is here. And, so, we're avoiding that. There's going to be some minor rerouting of some of the existing, uh, uh, pads, uh, ladder, because one comes through here right now, and the golf, uh, course owner removed that, obviously. Other than that, it really doesn't pose any adverse impact on the golf course. But what the drainage is already going here anyway, we're just going to clean it up a little bit, is what we're going to do. So, um, these homes, by the way, are to be between $225,000 and $200,000 in value, approximately 1,800 square feet to 2,400 square feet homes. Really nice homes that they have planned to build here. And of course, for Judy, these lots are about 90, 1,000 square feet. They're 75 feet, about 125 feet deep. Uh, and, and I'm sure there's going to be, and I haven't read the restrictions yet, but I'm sure there'll be a lot iron fence requirement to really open it up so that all of the lots have a view of the golf course, which will become a nice thing.
Okay. Any other questions, or? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Entertain a motion, then? Mayor, I move we approve the preliminary platte of Gulf Country Estates 2 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the preliminary platte for Gulf Country Estates, uh, 2 as presented. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries approving the preliminary platte as presented. This is exciting news, and, and we're, uh, I think, really looking forward to this, uh, opportunity. It's, you know, we, we talk about the growth at Torrleton and the student population, but one of the things that I think is evidenced by this, uh, development is that with students come faculty. And with faculty comes the need for housing that is, uh, suitable for that demographic. And so, I think this is really a, uh, a great, um, addition for our community so that those, that faculty has a decision to make here versus going east or west or north. So, great. All right, we'll move now to the Personnel Committee. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Casey Hogan is, uh, traveling this evening, and so we're going to, uh, we're going to go through these three items. In his absence, though, the, the committee did meet and discuss all three of these items and are coming with positive recommendations tonight for the council. And I'll, uh, turn it over to Pat Bridges and let him walk us through the three, three items.
Thank you, Mayor. The Personnel Committee met on February the 19th. Uh, there were three items of discussion. The first was, uh, actually a presentation from Financial Benefit Services. Uh, this is the firm that, uh, uh, we, the, are the city's new benefit consultant. Uh, they were placed with the Associates. FBS put on a, a presentation to, to the council of, uh, of the services that they offer. And they'll be coming back, we hope, within the next couple of weeks with, uh, some planned proposals for the council to take action on. So, uh, there is no, uh, there's no action for you to take on item A tonight. It was just, uh, an information brief.
So, one, one thing that Casey did want me to mention is that, is the committee chair, that this, this group, FBS, is really cutting-edge. They're hands-on. They are here to help us, and, uh, they're going to reduce the overall cost to the city for this service. And so, that's, that's going to be an excellent, it's a win-win. I mean, we, we lower cost and we increase the benefit. So, um, that's the way things ought to work. So, that's great. All right, item B?
Item B was a discussion of staffing study proposals. The committee received proposals from Evergreen Solutions and Management Partners/PW Consulting to conduct the staffing study for the city. Uh, there was two other companies that were contacted and declined to provide proposals. The proposal from Management Partners/PW Consulting was at a cost of $29,900. Uh, the, the second study was just slightly higher than that. I think the, the committee as a, as a whole, uh, preferred the proposal that was submitted by, uh, Management Partners. And I would say that the, the cost of that study is to be paid through current salary savings, so it's money that's already been budgeted in the fiscal year, but, uh, due to some positions that have not been filled, the, the, uh, that's where the funding for that study would be paid from. After discussion, the committee voted 3-0 to recommend the hiring of Management Partners/PW Consulting to the full council. And I would ask the council to take a vote.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion for the, uh, committee's recommendation.
Mayor, I move that we retain, uh, Management Partners/PW Consulting to do the staffing study that we requested.
A second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Savine, to, uh, proceed with the hiring of Management, Management Partners, uh, PW Consulting for the staffing study. Any discussion? All right, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. Item C?
Okay, item C was discussion of, uh, director of car allowance. Uh, committee discussed proposed policy addressing payment of car allowance to department directors and city secretary. Uh, this funding was actually approved by council in the, uh, in the, in the budget and, and it went into effect October 1st. It's not been paid out yet, as council had requested a policy in place prior to, uh, the, uh, car allowance is being distributed. So, we've come forward with this, uh, proposed policy. Uh, that, the policy was reviewed by the committee. Uh, council member Savine also requested the policy contain a requirement for employees receiving car allowance to maintain required level of liability insurance. And that employees were present to, were to present such proof of coverage as requested. Uh, that has been added to the policy. The committee voted 3-0 to recommend approval of the policy to the full council. We would ask for a vote on that policy.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt the policy on, uh, car allowance as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Savine, seconded by Ms. Zachary, to, uh, approve the car allowance as presented. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries as presented. And, uh, thank you, Pat, for that. We'll, uh, I guess, just a couple of quick comments on, on, uh, item B and C before we, before we leave that. The, uh, the staffing study is something that the council has been talking about for, uh, for several months now, and I, I think this, this move is in line with a lot of other things that we're working on to be able to define what the requirements are so we can build a long-term plan toward those requirements. And, to me, it, it doesn't send a signal one way or the other about where, where we're going. Uh, what it does is help us define what the problem is. And to be able to understand with, uh, some objective information, uh, if, or if not, decisions need to be made. So, I, I think it's, uh, a really positive move for us to be able to, to do that. And I also want to applaud the council on this, on this car policy, in that, you know, sometimes there, there are things that come up in budget, which we agreed to during the budget cycle to do, but there's no policy to, to guide how you implement that decision. And so, this is a, an excellent example of, of having, uh, some, some definition to, how to execute the dollars that are available so that there's not mixed signals and, and that we stay, remain consistent in how we apply it. So, I think that's a, a good thing for us to, to continue to do. And just want to thank the council for your effort, and Personnel Committee in particular, for your work with that. All right, now that I've, uh, talked long enough, for council member Pendleton, on the seat.
Thank you for stalling.
We will, uh, we'll move to the Community Services Committee.
Good time.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Okay, on February 19th, we had a Community Service Committee meeting, and at that meeting, we discussed the, uh, rate changes for Splashville for 2015. And I guess, uh, we had some good work done by our new director, Mr. Jeremy Allen. I assume he's back there in the back somewhere. There he is, right there. And, uh, he made some proposed changes, hopefully, to make the Splashville Park a little more profitable for the city the upcoming year. So, I guess at this time, I'm not sure there's any comment from the other committee members or from the council regarding the proposed rate changes or not.
Go ahead and make your motion.
Well, then I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, adopt the proposed rate changes as recommended to council.
Second.
All right, uh, motion by Mr. Pendleton, seconded by Mr. Nix, to approve the rule on rate changes for platte, for Splashville for 2015. Any discussion? Okay, all who's in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? All right, those are, uh, approved as presented.
That concludes my report.
Okay, great work there. And, and I, I do want to highlight a, a couple of things, uh, that, that were included in this. There, there, there is a, uh, uh, some party packages that have been included. There's extended hours, a Twilight Hour Swim, which is something that had not been available. And, uh, we've also got a, uh, Jeremy's included a, a low-rate day, uh, to allow, uh, admission, uh, at a, at a lower fee on one day of the week, so.
Monday mania, right there.
Yeah, Monday mania. At the pool. So, uh, it's, uh, some, some great things to look forward to, and we can all think about that Thursday morning, right? Because we're watching the, uh, the, uh, the second, the next wave of, of winter weather.
Mayor, one other, one other note on those changes, uh, is the, uh, the, the double price, the pricing for residents and non-residents has been eliminated as well, so there's a single price now.
Yeah, thank you for, for, uh, highlighting that. This, this does include a single rate so that we, we get out of the, this business of resident, non-resident, and are just saying, this is what, uh, the fee is if you show up and want to go swimming. So, um, and there are daily, you know, package discounts that are going to be available, so, uh, we, uh, I think the council wanted to kind of streamline the operation, but also send a signal that this is a community pool and, and we ought to view it that way. So, um, thank you for, for reminding me of that. All right, then we've got a, uh, an appointment recommendation from the nominations committee, so Sherri, you want to go over that for us, please?
Uh, yes, we had a vacancy occur on the, uh, uh, Library Board, or Library Advisory Board, and, uh, for which we have one recommendation from the, uh, Twentieth Century Club, and the application is here in our agenda. And, um, I recommend that we go ahead and fill that vacancy. But, uh, can, I'm not sure how to say her last name, Venestante? Venestante? Is that right?
Venestante?
Venestante, yes.
Okay. So, I'll take that in the form of a, a motion, then. Um, is there a second? All right, so it's, uh, motion by, uh, Ms. Zachary, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve the application of Kim Venestante for the Library Advisory Board. Any discussion? All right, I'll proceed to vote. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All who's opposed? All right, that motion carries approving the application as presented. The consent agenda?
Mayor?
I believe, uh, I believe item A needs to be, you know.
That's right, that motion. Mayor, I move we table, uh, item number A of the consent agenda. And Randy, can I include the approval of the other one?
the approval of the other one in the same motion? And I move we approve item number B, Resolution 2015-03.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to table item A, which is approval of minutes that we'll do at the next meeting, and an approval of, of item B, Resolution 2015-03. And that was made by Mr. McDannell, seconded by Ms. Zachary. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. With that, then we'll move to comments by the city administrator.
All I have is the finance committee will meet Mondays the 9th at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Okay. And Mr. Savine, do you have any comments?
I'm going to go with Doug on that.
Okay.
No comments. If Mr. Savine was quiet, I must be also.
Okay. You sure, Jerry?
When are you leaving? Jerry, when are you leaving? When are you going to go down there to the?
Mexico with a beach bum?
Okay, we are, before we move to an executive session this evening, there, there is one comment I, I failed to make at the beginning of the night that I wanted to, I wanted to come back to. You know, we, we've had a couple of the filings for, for city council, and I just want to thank citizens that have shown interest in, in running for office. It's the way you can serve your community, and I just want to thank you for that. I also want to just take this moment and what has happened over the last month in this community, and the comments that I made to begin with about the police department, the sheriff's office, just ask the community as a whole to, to pray for our first responders. I think it's, it's important to recognize that, okay, there was a, there was a moment that, that they were in the light, but that's something that our first responders wake up to every, every day. And so let's, let's remember them in our prayers, them and their families, as they take care of the, the security and safety of this community with a, with a undying commitment. And so just ask you with that, we will move to an executive session in compliance with consultation with attorney.
That's got to be a record.
Alan, you want to? Are you going to take pictures of your skinny white legs?
It's awesome.